John, we are live.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to special meeting of Blue Ribbon Pension Executive Review Committee. To help slow the transmission of COVID-19 and protect the health and safety of the community, City Council as well as Board and Commission Meetings will continue to be close to the public for in-person attendance. The public is encouraged to watch and participate from the safety of their homes to practice social distancing. Meetings are broadcast live on Glendale TV, viewable on Spectrum Cable, Channel 6, and glendaleca.gov/live, or on youtube.com/myglendale, and on Apple TV, Roku, and Amazon Fire devices, using a free app called Screen View, and choosing Glendale TV from the menu. For public comments and questions during the meeting, please call 818-937-8100. Public comments on a specific agenda item will be taken when that agenda item is discussed. And now I'm going to conduct a roll call. Executive Committee Member Bane?
Here.
Executive Committee Member Mulano?
Here.
Executive Committee Member Michael?
Present.
Executive Committee Member Mulano? Mr. Mulano?
Here, present, thank you.
Executive Committee Member Finch?
Here.
Next, our item number one, regular business agenda, 1A. Posting of the agenda, the agenda of the October 11, 2021, special meeting of the Blue Ribbon Pension Review Executive Committee, was posted on October 8, 2021, on the bulletin board outside the City Hall. Item number two, minutes.
We have no minutes, because we've not met before as an executive committee.
Item number, business items, 3A, future committee agenda items.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the first meeting of the Executive Committee. I'm delighted to have a chance with a little bit smaller group to do some brainstorming tonight around our future agenda items. So I thought maybe what I should do is start with a little bit of what I was thinking about and then bounce it off of you guys, if that makes sense. And obviously, I know there are going to be a lot of ideas here. And, you know, we have a somewhat limited amount of time for the committee. And so the things that I, I'd referred to a couple of these things previously. One of the things I'd very much like to do, and I don't know if any of you are familiar with John Bartel's work, as I mentioned the other day, he's an actuary, he's performed work for the city, although he's also performed work for most public entities in California, and has, actually, you guys have not seen it yet, I thought it was in the package last week, but it turns out it was not, has actually done an excellent analysis of Glendale. You know, so I'd like one session to be with him. He's very, he was originally on the chair of this committee, for those of you who knew that, and because of an illness in his family, he couldn't. He's sort of been my primary go-to guy in what I do with interest arbitration and other high-level work in the area of pensions. And among the things he can bring are really historical perspective, long-term forecasts, which I think are very important. He can talk about some of the options that are out there for the city, including, you know, a little bit more on the 115 trusts and leaving CalPERS and all of that. He also has, you know, just a great deal more information about the population itself, issues like the number of retirees versus the number of active, there's a number of the other things that are kind of driving the costs in the system. Anyway, I found him very, you know, to be extremely helpful. He's also one of the few people, few actuaries I know, who can really, who are, you know, very easy to listen to. And I don't know, Mike, you're an actuary, right? Is that?
That is correct.
So you probably know John, I assume.
No, I don't. You know, private and public sector is kind of two separate entities in that, in terms of who you know.
Yeah, okay, yeah. In any event, sure.
You mentioned something about having one session with this gentleman, Mr. Bartel. Are you referring to dedicating one meeting session for him? Or just he will attend as part of maybe a contingent of other presenters one time?
Well, I'll tell you honestly, I was thinking about an entire session for him. But part of that is because I think he can answer a lot of the committee's questions, because I know everybody has a lot of questions. And I want to make sure we have people who aren't just spouting information at you, but are also answering, you know, the hard questions.
I see. Let me add a couple of my perceptions about this.
Yes, of course.
This issue that the city of Glendale has with its pension is not anything new, been going on for years in many other cities. And I was going to suggest someone who has not been hired by a city previously or any other city with regard to the issues of pensions. So I was going to suggest former State Senator John Morlach, who headed the pension issues in the legislature. And I think that he would be an excellent person that we could invite to be present. So I'm trying to see if this committee will accept individuals who have shown a level of independence in their presentation. Now, we already have within our committee a couple of people who have an excellent background with regard to actuarial issues and financial issues. And maybe we should set aside some time for our own committee members to give us their take in the presentation on how they feel these numbers are presented to the public and how we evaluate them. I was also going to suggest a couple of other names as well, independent of Glendale. For example, former city manager of Ventura, former city manager of Santa Monica, former city council of Pasadena, Mr. Rick Cole, he's retired now.
I'm sorry, what's his last name?
Cole, S-C-O-L-E. Now, here's someone who has faced the problems, the financial problems that he inherited as he goes to the cities to try to manage their finances as in a position of city manager, to guide the financial department of the cities. I was also going to suggest Attorney John Stevens. He's an active member of the Costa Mesa City Council, and he was part of the pension oversight committee for that city. I was also going to suggest President of the Howard Jarvis Taxpayer Association. The taxpayers of Glendale, in my opinion, have been hit very hard by the increases in taxes as a result of the pension obligation. And Mr. John Kupel, I think, would be available to make a presentation to us with regard to his evaluation for all these years with regard to the pensions. And internally, I was thinking of suggesting that we have some testimony from the City Treasurer Rafi Manokian. He was the city council member who actually introduced the 3% at 50 back in April of 2001. And he's our current city treasurer. And he knows about, you know, the rate of returns. And I think he would be an excellent individual for us to receive testimony of how this obligation was presented to him, and how it came about making those particular decisions, and the impact they were now experiencing as a result. So these are just some of the individuals that I would suggest, including perhaps testimony from some of the CalPERS management. I think that CalPERS needs to be present to address the issues of their ineffective investments and why their investments have not returned what they promised, and also the issues that have to do with the mismanagement of CalPERS, which is a significant impact. If they mismanage, we, the taxpayers, pay. I think we should receive a testimony from CalPERS as well. Anyway, those are my suggestions. I would not like to see a full hour and a half being dedicated to just one person, especially someone who has been hired in the past to make a presentation that may not be as completely open or candid as we need to. We need to have clear, candid, no-holds-barred evaluation of this. Otherwise, there is no purpose for this committee.
So let me, I think those sound like some very interesting suggestions, and we should talk them around. And I'm, you know, again, I think it's important that we get all perspectives. So I couldn't agree with you more as far as that goes. I, you know, as far as actuaries go, actuaries kind of have a code of conduct of their own. So they're not, they're not big spinners of fact, we put it that way. So I wouldn't worry too much about that, but I certainly agree with you that you want to have a broad spectrum of input. So let's hear from, I guess maybe the best thing to do is hear from some other folks about your ideas and about their ideas, and then I can also throw in some line towards the end.
I think that your idea of having John in as a starting kind of position, I think the committee needs to understand some of the what can and can't be done within the system. And I think he would be a good person to give that kind of overview, point out some of the numbers, and help put things in perspective. Regardless of what direction the committee wants to go with this, there is a reality check at the end of the day, that you can't, the committee isn't free to make or shouldn't make recommendations that are impossible or unreasonable to fulfill. And I think he can go a long way towards grounding the committee. And then I think some of the stuff that Mr. Milano mentioned, I think some of those are very good people to have in. To, maybe they're counterpoints, but they can give some overview as well. And I think maybe even towards the end, have the legislative-type folks in, because maybe we can influence them to help us out in making the legislation for CalPERS a little more friendly to strapped cities.
Mr. Holzman?
Yes.
Yeah, I think Mr. Bane makes some cogent ideas in here that are proper and worth considering. I would like to add that many ideas that were considered, we say, impossible or difficult to make, have actually moved their way through the courts, if I'm correct. And actually, the California Supreme Court has found that some of the solutions that were at one point in time considered difficult or impossible, that have actually been accepted, if I read the results of some of their decisions. The issue with regard to, for example, whether the changes that were made in 2013 to make future changes as opposed to the pension system, where some people are vested and not, have been challenged. And CAL FIRE is, I think, one of the cases that I was looking at. And so I don't think it is prudent for us to think that some of the ideas and concepts that we have may be impossible. I think that's probably our role, to figure out what else has not been considered in the past, and what new path can we actually traverse, such that we can find a solution that many cities either have had bankruptcies or have basically pushed this thing forward another, you know, several decades ahead. So because it is a politically sensitive issue, because it has such an impact that is so severe to the taxpayer and the infrastructure of cities and the services that are being provided, we need to think out of the box to see what, how else, what else that we have not considered yet that should be considered. So getting an understanding of the nuts and bolts of how actuarial calculations are made is one thing. Understanding what options we have, I think we should be open to every possibility out there. And I think that we can learn that from individuals who have faced it as elected officials, in having to face the difficulty of being elected in a situation where what they say and do with regard to the pensions would create support or opposition that is significant to their reelection. Thank you.
So a couple of things, and then I want to get some more comments. So first of all, I've litigated, and my firm has litigated, most of the cases in the Cal Supreme Court, trying to create that flexibility. So one of the things I do want to present to you at some point, and it'll probably be my partner Linda Ross, is CAL FIRE, the Almeida case, and all the other cases that we have been involved in at the Cal Supreme Court, to obtain that flexibility. So I couldn't agree with you more, on the one hand. And on the other hand, you know, there are really two aspects of this problem, maybe three. I mean, the one, what you're referring to has to do with what is our ability, from a constitutional perspective, to change the prospective benefits of current employees. And a very important issue, extremely important issue, no question about it. But a lot of the challenge on the actuarial side, which doesn't change no matter what we do, is the unfunded liability created by our past employees. So that's something we have to deal with as well, and that's a lot of what's driving our costs. So you both kind of got a point here. And so I think we look at both those things, but the...
If I may, you just reminded me of something really important, and I may have to interject once in a while, because these are really important issues. We have our Personnel Director, Matt Doyle, active with us, present in our committees. And I think we need testimony from Mr. Doyle to explain to us how past abuses of the pension system have been perpetrated, and the impact that he has had overall. And we, the Assistant City Manager, presented to us the issue of the spiking. But there are many other ways in which the pension system can be rigged and modified to the benefit of some individuals, and that may be considered by many immoral, maybe fairly legal. But I think we need testimony from the Personnel Director to explain to us what the overall impact has been. If you can, if an employee can artificially jack up his pay in one of the last three years, and significantly change his pension for the next 30 years that he's retired, we ought to know that. We ought to know to what extent is this a common practice and has been used. So I think maybe Mr. Doyle would be an excellent individual to have, to provide formal testimony of what has transpired.
I think I'll let Matt speak for himself on this one.
Certainly, members of the committee. I've been in this organization for over 30 years. And, you know, I understand what Mr. Milano is saying about spiking and, you know, the things that have been done, not necessarily in this organization, but elsewhere. And obviously, the potential is there for such things. But I cannot say that Glendale has ever seen or tolerated any of those types of abuses. We've been quite in the forefront of efforts to not only address pensions, but also be, you know, part of the solution. And I think Mr. Tuktalian's report last week discussed those efforts, mainly in adopting second tiers and, you know, adopting cost-sharing provisions very early on, long before any other agencies were doing such things. As far as any abuses, again, Mr. Milano makes the comment that somehow, you know, the employees can increase their salaries in the last year to spike it. And, I mean, I'm sure he knows that an employee can do no such thing. Typically, employees are, their compensation is, in most cases, it's negotiated, and it's subject to, you know, the collective bargaining process, where, again, in most cases, you'll have entire bargaining groups of, you know, could be 100 to 500 employees who would be impacted by, you know, whatever, you know, gets, happens to get negotiated. And again, I can say, historically in Glendale, the salaries have not been high relative to our labor market comparisons. The city has, I would say, relatively conservative approach to its labor negotiations, in addition to the fact that, you know, the types of things that he's referring to, you know, just haven't been occurring here, at least to my knowledge, to my awareness. And again, I've been here a long time. You know, there's very little opportunity to spike, and certainly, it's not something that I, as the HR Director, would tolerate, nor of the various city managers that I've worked for.
So let me intervene here, because I haven't heard anything from three other members, and actually, also haven't heard very much from Mike even. So let me ask, we have a couple of members who are not, for lack of a better word, pensionistas. So let's hear from them for a minute. Grant, you want to tell me, what, I mean, what would you guys like to, you know, what are you thinking about in terms of what we should be presenting and what are the topics?
The process and what I'm thinking follow much of what Mr. Bane had said. I'd like to see a solid foundation, a presentation by the actuary that you propose, going into detail. That, I think, is a good starting point. I do agree with Mr. Milano that I don't want to be strained with who we may be able to bring in or look at other ideas. But as a starting point, I want to make sure that we do cover the depth of the issue, which, starting with the city's perspective, is, I think, a good starting point to understand that, and then we can decide where to go. I know Mr. Milano has already worked a lot and is already looking towards the solution. But I want to make sure that this committee, ostensibly the public, is able to get a good, solid background, so that when we do start talking about discussions of solutions, there's an understanding and enough of a background that people don't get lost. Not just members of the Executive Committee or this committee, but I'm also thinking of members of the public. I want to make sure that this first phase provides enough of a background that people can go back to, watch the videos, and when we do start discussing solutions, understand that.
Thanks. How about Zara? I haven't, because you're not on, because I don't see your picture, I don't think of you as much. Where are you, down there? What do you think?
Yes, Mr. Holzman. I tend to agree with Mr. Michaels and Mr. Bane. I think it's, I think hearing from Mr. Bartel, especially, you know, and trying to kind of look at what his history is, and considering that, you know, he comes with your recommendation as well, I think that would lay out a very good foundation for us, a starting point, as it were. You know, we heard from Mr. Tuktalian last week, and, you know, that really provided us with some solid background in a very general sense. And so hearing from Mr. Bartel, considering what his bona fides are, I think would be a really good starting point. And then I would be open to entertaining, you know, other speakers to come in and add context. I'm not really clear on, you know, what the opposition is to, you know, Mr. Bartel or any specific person, really. And so I think I do agree with Mr. Milano in the sense that this is a pretty well-known subject. You know, a lot of municipalities have dealt with these issues. And the solutions are fairly well-known. It's just a matter of being able to lay that out in a way that the public can understand, and that, most importantly, gives enough options, both in the short term and long term, so that there's an understanding by the city council as to what the, you know, solutions are and what those impacts might be of choosing different solutions. I do not think that, you know, we're here to, you know, first of all, I don't think there are some things we cannot do as a committee. And I think taking the time to talk about them at length would just be a waste of time. Going back and trying to change, you know, the legislation that had been passed and now govern the situation that the city is dealing with, or to suggest outcomes that are just impossibilities, given the agreements that the city has made under collective bargaining, or the manner in which they operate under, you know, state law, I think is, you know, is just, unfortunately, is just a waste of this committee's time. So I would be open to, starting with, you know, Mr. Bartel, laying out a foundation, and then entertaining, you know, other speakers that the committee members bring up.
And Ms. Finch?
Hi there. I would agree with the suggestion of starting, I think, with Mr. Bartel. It sounds like having a good foundation, I think, for the committee would be a great place to start. Sorry for the background noise. And so, as all the, you know, everybody else has pointed out, I think that they've all made really good points. And that it would be, you know, with his information and with his expertise of what he can bring to the table, is, you know, would be good for the committee to hear. And then maybe go from there with some of the other committee members' suggestions, as Mr. Amerian has pointed out as well.
Thanks. So this is giving me a thought, maybe, about how to proceed, because it sounds like there's support all around for what I'll call building a strong foundation to start. A foundation of understanding of kind of the factual core. But then, I think that what makes sense after that, and I can talk about what fits where, I think, now that we've talked about this a little bit, would be, you know, alternative views, for lack of a better word, challenges to that. Let's hear what those challenges are to that. And then the third phase would... And then the third phase would be solutions. So that way, we sort of hear, you know, I mean, and by the way, I mean, John Bartel, I want to be really clear, he's an independent actuary, so he's not the city's guy any more than he's my guy or anybody else's guy, but, you know, I have spent most of my career trying to create flexibility for cities to deal with this problem, which is to say, I am not bought into the idea that we should be limited, except to the extent that we are limited by, by things we can't change. And, and I just want to be clear about that. I'm a pension reformer, so I'm not here to defend the status quo. Very clear about that. That said, you know, I think it is helpful to build the foundation, understand where this comes from, understand that, again, people like John are, have been, over time, you know, tremendous critics of CalPERS, et cetera. So these are not people who are predictable in that respect. So I think there's John, I think, I think the idea that Mr. Milano had of hearing from CalPERS management would make sense early on as well. So, because I feel like also, before we sort of attack these folks or say they're doing something wrong, it'd be good to hear from them, right? And then we talk about the critique. So we do sort of the foundation, the critique, and then the, then the potential solutions. How does that sound?
Mr. Holtzman?
Yes.
Okay. I've, I like the idea of having the committee members who are not as fully apprised of the pension system or have a history of it, who get a sense of what is being presented. But I have sat through many presentations in the past from experts that went on for quite a lengthy period of time, and I could see the glazed eyes of the city council members as they watched these presentations. We had our own experience last week with a very lengthy information with a lot of extraneous data that could have been summarized in a way that was impactful to anybody new to this issue of the pension complications we are in. It is my hope that we can get these presentations properly summarized for the general public, for the taxpayers who are listening, or for reporters from newspapers to understand, let alone, you know, the, the amount of information that our own committee members need to appreciate. Sometimes a lot of details do not necessarily allow us to see a bird's eye view of what the problem is, or narrow us down a path to say, well, can't be done, let's just accept the status quo. Let's get a big picture of these problems summarized in a way that it is digestible to the layperson, or at least a college-graduated layperson out there. It is important for me to, to ensure that everyone be as educated and apprised of these problems so that it is, it is palpable as to how significant it is for the residents and, and the solutions that have been presented in the past, and why it continues to be, after all of these years, such a significantly pressing problems to cities throughout California and for California itself. So the summary seems awfully important.
Yeah, I, I, I don't disagree, and, and I think we can, we can do that. And I agree also, it is a challenge. One of the reasons I like to use John, if I can get him, as opposed to one of the other people who work with him, because in my experience, he is one of the more lively and engaging actuaries, sorry, Mike. You know, I mean, there's a lot, there are a lot of actuarial jokes, and, and most of them are about, you know, green eye shades kind of thing, so the, you know, but you're right, that that, it really is a challenge, and I, I don't, I don't disagree with your point about that. The, the challenge in my mind, though, is, you know, the problems that Glendale and other cities face in the area of pension are, you know, are extremely serious, and the public does need to understand that even if we have a fairly limited set of, of options, how serious those problems are. Why? Because over time, that may build a political consensus to create other options. So, you know, I, I, I think, I think you're right, it's, it's a little bit of a challenge. I don't know, Mike, any thoughts about, you know, about how to, how to, you know, how to make these points to the public, for lack of a better word?
Well, one, one of the things I was hoping to bring to the committee is a little bit of possibly that interpretation between what might be, maybe it's dull, maybe it's entertaining, but it's incomprehensible, and to turn some of that into some underlying concepts that make it easier to, to understand, because unfortunately, I think the public pension system universally, not speaking badly against CalPERS, but universally is overly optimistic. I mean, this whole issue of the buyout cost is the difference between their optimism about how, what kind of return they're going to get on their assets, and their pessimism of, if you make us take on this liability, oh my God, we can't use those assumptions. And that's the discrepancy between the two. And, you know.
Well put.
I would say both are incorrect. Neither one of those represents reality, and unfortunately, that's what's out there.
Yeah, I, I mean, that, that, that's a great way to put it. I mean, we are looking at, you know, even public sector discount rates, you know, likely dropping to six percent, but just.
And that has a huge cost impact.
Right, 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 absolutely. I mean, and, and one of the things I always like to ask Bartel is, okay, tell me exactly, you know, I mean, not exactly, but, you know, what percentage, what, what does that do to our rate, you know? And, I mean, I can tell you, just looking at Bartel's numbers.
He probably knows.
Yeah, so just looking at Bartel's numbers for safety, he, he has us rising from about a sixty percent rate right now to almost an eighty percent rate in 2030. And, and that is, that difference is almost entirely due to the, to the change in discount rate and how it affects unfunded liability.
I, Mr. Holtzman, I, I think this conversation highlights my concern going forward, because we really should be reaching out to the general public to understand what's taking place, and I think these numbers mean a significant amount. You know, if the unfunded portion of this pension increases, means that we have to pay more taxes, so how does that translate to a resident in Glendale? Say, hmm, your current obligation as a resident living in a house or an apartment, your obligation is, on the unfunded portion, is eight thousand five hundred dollars each. That resonates, that sounds is crisp, is clear, and is accurate, right? Or just the, my point is, is that we made a promise, shall we say, based on an assumption that wasn't realistic, and people can look at number like seven and a half percent return on investment, and they can say, oh, I'm getting half of a percent on my savings, right? So how could you promise that kind of return? Or, you can say, in the past twenty years, CalPERS has returned roughly maybe four and a half percent, five and a half percent?
It's done a little better.
Definitive twenty-year period, and we promised, right, seven and a half. So people can understand language of that sort, and then translate it into what it actually means to the city's overall expense, in a way that says.
Sure.
Now, instead of having eight million dollars payments to CalPERS, as we did twenty years ago, we now have whatever, ten times more, right? What does it mean to city services? What does it mean to increasing sales tax? What does it mean to increasing fees? Translating those numbers and those percentages into the language that residents can understand will allow us to have the political power needed to make the difficult decisions coming forward. But if people feel snowed under the, you know, the intricacies of some percentages and numbers and language that they cannot understand, we are not doing a proper service of disclosure and transparency that we aim to, or at least the city aims to have. And that's my concern, that presentations can be made relevant to the residents, relevant to the taxpayer, and, and more importantly, truly relevant to the city council, you know, for whom many of these numbers also are, in a way, out of their reach. I mean, they approved a lot of this stuff in the first place, so we know that they, they did not know. And that's my concern, that I want to address as we go forward.
Well, I think, yeah, I mean, and, I mean, you're right about the impact. I was just looking, the cost, just for safety, that Bartel is predicting will rise, and you can ca, you can calculate this, just, you know, divide by number of, of residents from, this is, by the way, the cost without employee cost sharing, so it's not entirely fair, but from about thirty-one million currently, is for safety, to fifty-six million? So, you know, or so is, is the prediction. Now, again, that's without employee cost sharing, so with, with employee cost sharing, it's going to come down a little bit from there, but, but that gives you a sense of how serious the issue is. So you're, I mean, you're not wrong about the seriousness of the issue, and, you know, and, and Mike is not wrong, that i, in large part, it comes from, you know, well, public pensions in general have, have been based on very optimistic scenarios, as far as what the return, you know, projected return rates were, and that's true too. You know, the, the flip side of the challenge, however, that CalPERS faces to some extent, and I've worked with CalPERS a fair amount, is that if they raise rates too quickly, they bankrupt cities. And so, this is, this is a challenging problem. I'm not saying they're going to bankrupt Glendale, but I did represent Stockton and Vallejo. So, you know, so you're not wrong about that, and I don't think there's much disagreement even, even probably within CalPERS, that the current return rates are, are, projected return rates are still too high, but it's challenging.
I'd like to go ahead and bring us back to the commi, the committee agenda items issue, which is what we're discussing.
Thank you.
And I'm, I'm willing to extend a sense of trust to you, John, to go ahead and lay out what your agenda is, bring in some of your speakers. Mr. Milano's points of brevity and clarity in presentations certainly do have weight, and I support that, but at this point, when we're talking about the agenda items, I'm willing to give you a little bit of leeway to lay out a sufficient background, trust your judgment a little bit, and take back from the executive committee that we're looking for brevity, focus, a range of perspectives, and give you a chance to come back, deliver that to the committee, knowing that the executive committee's job is to come back and give you a critique and feedback through the process, not trying to jump ahead to say, at this first meeting, these are all the people we want to hear from, and get to a solution. I support Mr. Milano's position that the committee should have the leeway to bring in people and change direction, explore options, but at this early stage, I'm looking to give you a bit of leeway, trust your judgment, and lay out the starting point to get things rolling, knowing that the executive committee has the task of adjusting course.
Thank you. I, I, I mean, I, I do have a, a, a sense of, of what I, I think we need to lay out, and I am, however, sympathetic to Mr. Milano's point that, you know, the level of detail could choke a horse. And so, I'll, I'll do my best to try to think about, maybe that's our best, our biggest challenge, is, is how to get the salient points out there. I do think John helps a lot with that, Bartel. The, I, I think it would make sense for us to have somebody from CalPERS. I'm actually hoping, but I'm not sure she'll do it, that Marcy Frost, the head of CalPERS, will, will come. I don't know if she will or not, she might send somebody, but, you know, I, I will say, just personally, that I spent a lot of time, I wrote a lot of articles, beating up CalPERS for getting us into three percent of fifty, and the way we got into three percent of fifty, which is going, you know, back to day one, and, you know, a lot of those sorts of things. My sense about CalPERS leadership right now is a little different, but, but, you know, so anyway, that's a, that's a conversation I'd like to get in on the front end of this, you know, on, and I'd like to get in the discussion of the law around vested rights that's come from the California Supreme Court, because I think that's something that, you know, we have to understand constrains our options to some extent. It also presents some options, but mostly constrains our options, so.
Mr. Holtzman?
Yes.
I think it's important, when you ask John to come, that, I think Mr. Milano makes a very good point, that telling people that it's going, the contribution rate's going to change from sixty percent to eighty percent, that doesn't mean anything to laypeople. If he can translate that into dollars, whether it's absolute dollars or dollars per person in town, make it something that's tangible so that you see the dollar change, not looking at it as a percentage of payroll.
Yeah, that makes, that makes sense. Well, he does do it both ways, fortunately, so that, that, that helps. But I think you also have to look at it, then, what he doesn't do is then match it to the budget itself, you know, because even when you say it's sixty million dollars, you know, once you put, once you go past about two or three million dollars, the human brain can't, I think, can't really get its head around, you know? So I, I, I think it's a question of understanding, you know, what is the general fund budget and what percentage of the but, general fund budget is it?
Yeah.
The, Mr. Holtzman, I, I, maybe we can, is it necessary for us now to come up with a motion with regard to, let's say, accepting Mr. Bartel as the first speaker, and consideration of five more, or is it just simply a suggestion for you to wrap up and present to the committee?
I feel like if you guys are disagreeing with where we're going, then by all means, bring a motion, but we don't need in the executive committee to act formally, these are, you're just giving me guidance, really, unless you feel like I'm out of line, in which case, obviously, you should do whatever, you know?
Mr. Holtzman, I feel very positive about you and your integrity and, and your experience, and I, and I think that you will do whatever is right, you know, for us, for this committee and for the residents, and, and the assistance that the city council needs in wrapping their arms around this difficult issue. What I would like to make one suggestion, though, that I, has helped me a lot in the past, is by making it relative to the number, to a, to the number of residences in Glendale, there are seventy-five thousand. When we do it per capita, it means that we have to count children and, and, and individuals who are not necessarily the ones who are earning the income and have to pay the taxes. But when you have a household, and there are seventy-five thousand households in Glendale, that impact to that family makes a lot of sense to me, and I think it's a way of presenting to the public what it actually means to them, when they have to think about, ah, my retirement or my family's retirement is going to depend on X amount per year, right? And they can compare that to what certain employees are getting in retirement today, and they can get evaluation as to, oh, wait a second, is that fair? Is that just? Because at the end of the day, we need to present to, to the residents of Glendale the moral issue that we have, because moral issues turn into legislation usually, and they impact us long-term, and we've been impacted for twenty years so far, based on the decisions that occurred twenty years ago. So knowing how the decision came into being is truly essential, in my point of view, because it allows the city council to become aware of how they receive information and how it's impacted long-term. And people in general tend to discount the future, right? It's the lack of sufficient savings, so the general public is one example, and that level of awareness sometimes extends even to city council members. So we need to ensure that we are able to present things in a concise way for the long haul. An employee today who earns, who gets a raise or maybe a step increase, an additional one, what is the actual impact for that one, let's say, one typical employee going on for twenty more years of employment, plus thirty more years of retirement? What is that cost? And that makes sense, because if I were to tell someone, the ex-city manager of the city of Glendale will be making, if he lives his full thirty years, seven million dollars in compensation. That's a number that residents understand. My God, seven million dollars and so forth. And you go down the line of other individuals who are already making over two hundred thousand dollars in retirement today. What happens in the next twenty, thirty years? We are basically giving millions of dollars to individuals and people can compare to what they had in their best day. Hardly anyone has even five hundred thousand dollars saved for their retirement. So there's an equity issue that we need to present, that people need to understand. The imbalance and the significance of what that means to a city like Glendale's finances. We just raised the sales tax to one of the highest in California. And I remember when the sales tax used to be six percent, right? It's now double that. And sales tax is a regressive tax that impacts the poor. That's the impact. We are paying this immense benefits in the millions of dollars paid for by those residents with the least amount to pay, right, with the least amount of income. And that disparity is not going to be presented by Mr. Bartel. That's why we need other individuals who can present it in a way that residents can understand the significance of that.
Okay, let me, I want to let some other folks talk here, uh, because I do want to wrap up at seven thirty if we can. So, uh, you know, Ms. Finch, you're, uh, uh, the lucky recipient of being both a manager and the, uh, the lone employee rep on the, uh, on the committee. So I'm curious, is there, is there anything, you know, from sort of employee perspective? And I realize you're a manager, so that's kind of a funny statement, but that you think we should be covering?
Um, I think from this, you know, my point of view, um, just hearing John's presentation last week, uh, I mean, I, you know, I started in finance, you know, I've, you know, been in financial positions for the fire department and now currently the police department. So I've seen our finances in the city perspective from a many different ways. And seeing his presentation, you know, last week, I think, was extremely helpful as, you know, starting to lay that ground, that groundwork, the foundation side of it. But I think your suggestion of, you know, kind of sticking to that, those major bullet points of, you know, having that foundation, having, you know, the, the middle layer of the critique slash options and then solutions. And I think that if we, um, and trusting you and your expertise to bring forth speakers and presentations that kind of speak and, you know, attest to these, these areas to, you know, bring to the committee the information that we need, um, for what we're here to do, like why the committee was brought together. I, you know, I listened to the other committee members, um, this evening. I think that they all bring a lot to the table as their suggestions, you know, and, and it is important, you know, how Mr. Milano points out, you know, that you kind of have to have, you know, that different perspective sometimes brought forward. But I think, starting next week, I think the foundation with Mr. Bartel would be very helpful to the rest of the committee members. And, you know, bring, you know, bringing forth Glendale's, you know, position and whatnot. And so, um, I trust your judgment and making sure that through these meetings that they are the speakers in the presentation, that we, the committee and the public, need to be exposed to and hear. I do find, um, I know financial data isn't always the most exciting and it can get very, you know, daunting at times, but I think that a level of detail is expected, um, because if you stay super high level, you're not getting into the weeds of some of the information that you need to know. And I agree that we, you know, I, I hope that the speakers will bring forth the information that, um, most will understand, that it's not going to be in technical terms and, and whatnot, that it needs to be presented in a way that it's going to reach the wider audience to ensure that, you know, we fully understand what's being presented to us, if that makes sense.
Yeah, sure. No, I appreciate that. And that's I'm hoping also that, uh, when we're all done with all this, we'll be able to put together a cogent report that really highlights, you know, and hopefully, you know, as straightforward terms as we can, uh, without a lot of gobbledygook, what the, what the challenges are. Because I, you know, I guess, you know, my own perspective is, is, is the economic challenges and the pension situation are, are very great. The, the trick is figuring out, you know, what, what to do about it. But I think it's important that the public understand both pieces of that point.
Uh, Mr. Holtzman?
Absolutely.
I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. Holtzman, I want to
I'm sorry, let, let Ms. Finch finish first.
I did not see what's finished, sorry.
Uh, no, I was gonna, I was gonna say that I, I agree. And I think starting with, you know, Mr. Bartel and, and bringing in a CalPERS person to explain, you know, the other side of it from the CalPERS side, I think would be, um, extremely important because there's a lot that, you know, they could bring forth to the table, um, as well. So I think that was a really good suggestion.
That's great. Mr. Milano?
Uh, thank you. I want to follow up on, uh, uh, Mr. Michael's suggestion that we move on to the other items that we want the committee to consider besides the, uh, the testimony, should we say, of, you know, presentations? Uh, because I have several to suggest.
Sure.
So.
Let's do it.
Uh, I want one of the topics, uh, for this committee to consider is to look at the financial impact to the city in the last twenty years. Within that topic of the financial impact, let's simply refer to the amount of debt that has accumulated, although it's part of it, you know, went into additional bonded debt in order to meet the needs of, of, uh, of the city's, uh, Glendale Water and Power. But the deficiencies in infrastructure, the deferred capital improvements by department, it's significant. And most people, even some of the city council members are unaware of the level of deferred infrastructure. That's in the hundreds of millions of dollars. And I want the public and for us to consider the impact that this pension obligation and these payments have had on the city's basic needs of, so the, uh,
Let me challenge you a little bit on this one, uh, uh, because I, I completely agree that we should be talking about the impact to the city. And no question, I think we all agree on that point. But I want to be a little careful, uh, about, I mean, going backwards. You know, you, you can't really attribute that impact to any, you know, in terms of what has or hasn't been funded, et cetera. And I'm a little concerned about mission creep for this committee because, um, you know, that, that could lead also into a much broader conversation about, you know, labor policy and other things that cost money. I'm just, I'm just a little concerned. We have, we have a lot on our plate here. And I, I, I don't disagree at all about analyzing the financial impact to the city, but I'm a little concerned about sort of retrospective analysis, because I think it's speculative.
Well, uh, Mr. Holtzman, I, I disagree with you on this one, uh, respectfully, for the following reason. If one of the solutions that this committee comes up with is an additional debt, let's say we borrow money to, as such, pay for the debt.
What happened?
CalPERS, right? We're basically replacing, uh, or adding to a particular debt with another means. And the result is on fewer city services. Politics and economics is about a very simple thing. Who gets what? And in this case, what we have is who is getting the bulk of the increases in taxation? Who's getting the bulk and what is being missed out by the general public as a result of it? I cannot see how this cannot be integral to the discussion and to make it relevant to the city council and to the public as to what the impact of this, of these pension obligations are. Once people see how it impacts their day-to-day quality of life, then it becomes important. And we have a clear, what's beautiful about doing this year is that it's twenty years after the initial major change to, uh, to police and fire, that three percent of fifty. So.
To be clear on my position, I don't have any issue at all with the idea of looking at what this impact is on sort of a going-forward basis. I'm, I'm a little concerned about sort of a forensic exploration of past expense. It just seems to me to be complex and speculative. I don't, let me hear from some other members of the committee.
Mr. Holtzman?
Yes. Cesar?
This is Ari Amarian. Yes. And I'm, I'm going to echo, uh, Mr. Michael's, uh, suggestion from some time ago. I think, I think the reality of the situation, and I'm not going to be quite as eloquent as Mr. Michaels, but, uh, you know, there's a reason you're getting saved the big bucks here. And I'm willing to, you know, extend, uh, you know, some opportunity for you to present what you think the committee and by extension, the public needs to hear, in our first, you know, meeting or even maybe our first couple of meetings, you know, the people that we, you think that we might need to hear from. And, uh, and that will lay that foundation for this committee to do this, the, the, the work that's being suggested by all of the executive committee members and, and even the committee members, you know, uh, who were, uh, you know, quite passionate about the subject, during our first two meetings. And, and, you know, I'm also willing to entertain, you know, down the line, an opportunity to have a defined, uh, period of time for the committee members to offer, you know, whatever type of commentary they would like, whether it's in, you know, an executive summary form or a presentation, be that, you know, somewhere in the five to ten minute mark. I, I know Mr. Milano has, has suggested that, um, it's, it's very possible and, uh, you know, to put, you know, kind of these summaries together that present this information in a way that's intelligible to, you know, both the committee and the public who might not be as well-versed financially. And I, and I'm happy to entertain that as well. But I think the first couple of meetings, uh, you know, at least the very first meeting, it might be, it might be prudent for, um, you know, this committee to entertain having you, you know, bring in the people that you'd like the committee to hear from, that would lay the foundation for us, moving forward in order to explore what our options are for the city of Glendale specifically. Thank you.
Mr. Holtzman?
Yes, Mr. Michaels.
I'd like to go ahead and just bring up scheduling as a way of trying to move forward. I'm glad that you brought up scope creep. One thing I want to make sure, going along the, the points of brevity and efficiency, is that this committee doesn't start going in too many different directions all at the same time. And I see, I, I proposed and encourage the executive committee to be something that would rein that in. So what I'd like to do is have the executive committee's meeting schedule set, whether it's once a month, twice a month, so that we review the agendas, but don't try and project the agendas too far ahead and get ahead of ourselves. Much of the discussion here tonight was starting in to talk about solutions and issues when we're here to talk about how the committee as a whole functions and the schedule that it follows. So if we do have and establish the procedure that the executive committee will constantly review future agendas, we don't have to try and do, lay out all of the agendas, looking to all of the different people that we might want to bring in, and just start with following your initial plan and know that our job is to give you feedback and direction. And know that we have the interest in brevity. We don't want to be constrained in where we can't or cannot explore. But if we lay out, I suggest if we talk about scheduling the committee meetings, we then have some certainty of when this group can then come back and provide direction on the agendas so that we, so the executive committee doesn't feel that this is our only shot to lay out a roadmap.
That sounds like a, a great suggestion. I mean, my thought about it would be that if you give me essentially two meetings, which would be, um, and again, I'm a little, you know, a little concerned Bartel is not committed to next week. So, uh, he, he might end up being the week after, the, 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 the meeting after that, which is unfortunate. I'd much rather have him next week, but I don't have a commitment from him yet. So, um, the, um, but that we've got, what we have in, in, that I think is in the information category, before we hit what I'll call sort of the critique category, is the CalPERS piece, the vesting piece, and the Bartel piece. And I may be skipping something in this, but, um.
The financial impact piece, if I may, Mr. Holtzman?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I've, I agree with Mr. Michaels. I want to add maybe another objective. As with Mr. Michaels, I headed a lot of complex projects in, in IT for large companies. And I know it is, it is important very early on to have a very clear objective of the end result. What is it that we want to accomplish at the end of this process? And the way that I see it as of today is that our objective is to create a document to the city council, who eventually has to make a decision on all of the essential elements that they must consider in order to be able to make the wisest decision possible for the benefit of the residents of Glendale. So that's the end objective. And in preparation for this meeting, I made a list of major key points that I felt allocated during the next six meetings, uh, or eight meetings if we have.
So would you do me a favor? Why don't you just list them? I'm going to keep quiet so you can give me a list. And then we'll come back and we'll cover them in more detail at our next meeting, but, but let's get the list.
One of them is the, uh, I put it here as the title, the, uh, information about the city's pension trends, right, in the past, uh, for the past twenty years, with graphs and so forth, right? And the expected pension trends in the future. So that's one. The financial impact of the city for the past twenty years. The testimony, who do we have make presentations? We already covered that. A topic of significant importance to me is public awareness and transparency. What are we doing and what are we suggesting to the city staff? To expand the public outreach of these meetings and to measure the level of awareness of the general public with regard to the pension. I think it should be one of the key objectives of this committee to ensure that the general public become aware. The others have to do with, uh, maybe testimony by this director of finance to get an overall view of how the city's finances are being impacted by this in a very clear way. The, we already covered the history of CalPERS and the, and their level of, uh, effectiveness in managing the pension funds. Full explanation of the abuses and arrangements of the pension calculation, market rate of returns and the recessions and impact. One of the things that I find missing, it's very significant, is that they don't take into account the fact that we generally have two recessions every decade. And it's not even considered at all in, in making these calculations. It's pretty astonishing. Evaluation and comparison of income and retirements of the taxpayers of Glendale as a whole. We don't compare that to what the general population is experiencing. We're not giving them relevant information by which to guide, um, policy with regard to how the city council will evaluate this. And then the last, uh, last one is, uh, an issue of how this pension committee moves forward. And I'm concerned about the, uh, the potential challenges to our own proceedings due to the fact that we have a significant conflict of interest. And I want a consideration that members of the city employee associations, whom I welcome to participate, that maybe there should be ex-official members, because there could be a challenge to our own proceedings because of the significant conflict of interest. After all, people are going to vote whether they're going to accept or not accept a presenter or a topic when these discussions are impacting them directly, directly, not indirectly, directly. So I've just wondered if these, the, how the pension committee is being comprised, the way it is being arranged today, whether it may be a significant brown act violation in the future and challenged so that all of our proceedings will go for not. So I wanted that as part of a topic of discussion.
Well, the last one I, I can address is a matter of law, although I probably shouldn't step into my lawyer role. I should, I should probably hand that over, uh, to Doreen. But the general rule is that something that affects all city employees doesn't, doesn't pose a conflict. So, um, there, there's a lot of law on this issue I, I have dealt with in other places. So there's a lot of law on this issue I have dealt with in other places. At least it doesn't pose a legal conflict of interest, let me put it that way.
Those were the topics that I wanted for the committee to consider.
Doreen, did you want to add anything to that? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to step on into your territory.
No, Mr. Holtzman, you are correct. And this is a committee, so the end result is going to be a report presented to the city council for their consideration. It's an informational report, so I concur with your analysis and conclusion.
Okay, well, that's very helpful. So here's what I'd like to do, because I promised we were going to have a shorter meeting today. The, I think you've given us enough to work with. Maybe we should schedule, I hate to do this. So John, one of the issues was scheduling this meeting. Nobody was super happy with the 6:30 time on Monday. In fact, thank you all for making it. I know it didn't work for almost every single person in the committee and you all made it work nonetheless. What, how much flexibility, if any, do we have as far as a different time?
Thanks, John. I, it's a good question. I think I mentioned at our last week's meeting that the issue we have is we've sort of run out of time slots in the evening hours to hold meetings in a life setting where members of the public would have the opportunity to both call in for the specific agenda items and for us to be able to televise it. Right before this meeting started, I got an updated, I asked for an updated list of meeting dates and times that might be available. I asked for something in line with what the committee expressed last time, which was to hold these meetings in the evening for members of the public to be able to watch them after they got home from work. So the following dates I can list out can start as early as 5:30 PM. If there's a desire by this committee to hold these executive committee meetings or even the regular meetings at a different time during the day, we can go back and revisit what available time slots we have. But as it relates to the executive committee, there's no rhyme or reason for these dates. I can list them out.
Okay.
Unfortunately, many of them are on Fridays. So Friday, October 15th, Friday, October 22nd, Wednesday, October 27th. That's assuming that our tenant landlord committee hasn't yet been scheduled. Friday, October 29th, Friday, November 5th, Thursday, November 11th, Friday, November 12th, Friday, November 19th, Monday, November 22nd.
Okay, hang on, let's, we're probably at about our limit here for what we can absorb. So what's the ExCom's pleasure here about whether we want to schedule something, not before the next full meeting, which is the 18th, but the meeting after that? So the next meeting after that would be, I assume it's November 1st? This, yes. So we could.
If I may, what I'd like to address first is the general committee is meeting twice a month, correct?
That's, that's right.
How many times a month would you like the executive committee to meet?
I think once a month is sufficient personally, but you tell me. I don't want to, I don't want to, I want to make sure you're giving all the input you want to give. So you tell me.
For me, I think once a month initially is sufficient. We can certainly reach you by email, talk to you, communicate with you directly if there are concerns. And we can certainly request additional meetings. But before we start picking dates and times, I just wanted to nail down the frequency with which we may want to meet because that may influence a regular schedule for meetings.
Yeah, I mean, my feeling is, first of all, you can all, all of you have my telephone number, I assume. If not, I'll email it to you, not on something that's being broadcast. So, so, you know, you're always welcome to call me. And yeah, I mean, I think as we get closer to the end and we're dealing with the report, we're going to need more. But my feeling is if we had a meeting on, say, Friday, November 5th, I'm just trying to make it work with the dates that were offered. That would be, that would be after two more, two more full committee meetings.
May I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Oftentimes I find that after a detailed meeting of an hour and a half or longer, that committee members will have questions with regard to either need clarification, the impact of new information that they did not have. And as a result of that meeting, additional questions for either additional testimony or a better understanding of what has transpired needs to be addressed at the next meeting. So my thinking is that there should be at least a one-to-one relationship, at least two meetings of the executive committee for every, or basically one executive committee meeting for every general meeting of the committee.
I'm fine with that. I just, I really want this to be your, the committee's decision. I don't, I don't have a strong view, but this is your chance to make sure I'm doing the right thing. So whatever, whatever's the will of the committee.
Mr. Holtzman, if I may?
Yes, please, Zara.
This is our, I was unclear. So, you know, if Mr. Milano, was Mr. Milano asking for one executive committee meeting for every general committee meeting?
That's right. So it would be, it would mean there are two executive committee meetings per month, basically, and two regular meetings per month.
Okay. And the purpose, if I heard correctly, was in order to, you know, have the executive committee ask questions of, of, you know, staff, of things that were unclear from prior meetings? I just want to make sure that I understand the reasoning behind the request because I tend to agree with Mr. Michaels that once a month, especially at the beginning, or once every two meetings, if we want to frame it in that way, would be sufficient. But I do want to have a clear understanding of what Mr. Milano's concern was.
Well, yes, I can answer that question. Let us assume that in one of our regular meetings, a presentation is made having to do with the, saying the buying in of additional service credit, right? Adding additional years so that could be vested in a much better way. Now, those were addressed at Peppera. But nonetheless, it's a topic that may be relevant for someone to say, wait a second, I don't fully understand the implications. Let's agendize that for the next meeting so that we can get clarity on. So what occurs in one meeting prompts us to ask relevant questions and we set it for the agenda. We don't set it for a discussion of it. We're just simply saying this is maybe important enough that the rest of the committee should get a presentation or a report. And that would be the objective. So really, we can do these meetings in about half an hour, tops, and the executive committee, that is. Transpired and what questions arose out of that issue, especially if we find apparently contradictory information. And when we find that, let's say, okay, we need clarification on that. Let's get the staff to give us a presentation or clarification or let's get someone else to give us a presentation with a different take that is not necessarily from individuals who are, we say, directly vested in our issues. Anyway, that was the purpose.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you. Mr. Holtzman, if I may?
Please.
So my understanding is that there is an agenda item on every general committee meeting for the committee members to suggest future agenda items. Is that, is that?
Absolutely.
Am I mistaken there?
No, that's correct. Every single, on the regular meetings, it's going to be on every single meeting.
And any committee member at any time could reach out to you and, you know, ask for some sort of clarification, you know, directly to you about something that may or may not, you know, have been cleared during a meeting. Isn't that, am I mistaken there?
No, that's correct as well.
Okay, okay. Well, considering those, those two factors, I mean, I think having an executive committee member, you know, to simply fill the role, you know, that's already present of those two meetings, I think might be a bit redundant. I'm open to, I'm open to, you know, starting off the process by scheduling, you know, our next executive committee member, committee meeting for, you know, after the next two general meetings. And then entertaining during that meeting, you know, any of the executive committee members or even the committee members during the general meeting, any concerns that they might have that, you know, we aren't addressing, you know, in real time, issues or questions that might be unclear to committee members or executive committee members.
Yes, let me just propose a compromise, which is, I really, I really agree with what Zara had to say there. Why don't we do November 5? So we'll skip two meetings this, this one time. But actually plan on, on then having two executive committee meetings in the month of November. So we would take November 5 and then we would take November either 19 or 22nd.
I'd be open to that.
I wanted, Mr. Holtzman, I wanted to interject. If this meeting were not laid out to sort of set the general parameters going forward, I would have had quite a few questions to ask with regard to last week's presentation. And, and it would have been germane to the purpose of this committee to discuss whether they were merit revisiting. And so it is difficult to assess going into the future whether an executive meeting would be essential. But why don't we assign at least the first meeting after the next general meeting and assess to see whether it is not going to be necessary or not? Rather than wait two general meetings for us to have our executive meeting, I suggest that we have an executive meeting following the next one so that we can determine if there is really a benefit to having this, this executive meetings more frequently or shorter, for that matter. The, if we're just on last week's meeting and all the amount of information that we received, I went through it and I found many areas that look problematic, significantly problematic to me in the way the calculations were done and the way the presentation was made. And so if this were the purpose of this meeting, I would have plenty to say. And so it is not just an opinion. Oftentimes it refers to, let's come back with data that supports the following contention that you just made, or irrelevant. So I would suggest a meeting of the executive committee following the next general meeting.
And I would like to say that if we're going to trust John to get us the first few speakers, we don't need one after the next general meeting. Let's let him get at least the first, his top priority speakers to us. And then it makes sense to have, and as he's scheduled to in November, I think it lays out fairly well and then we can decide about December.
I'm open to that. Yeah, and I concur.
Mr. Milano, to your point, I would like your comments to be shared with the committee rather than the executive committee. The executive committee is more to manage the process. The full committee would benefit from more robust discussion. So I'm, that's where I'm trying to determine what the need is for meetings for the executive committee to manage the process, not have an auxiliary discussion that excludes the large majority of the committee. If discussions are long-lasting, running very long, we need to come back and figure out how to address that procedurally, not just say, we'll continue that discussion in an executive session.
You're absolutely right. I fully concur with that. The objective that I want to have is to say, I have the following issues with the last presentation. Should we agendize this? And that was.
Let me, let me ask a question. I mean, you know, one of the things that we didn't get time to do is to ask questions of John after the last presentation, John and Michelle. Do you think that we should start with questions from that last presentation at our next general meeting?
I think that would be a good start. It would give people on the committee the opportunity to speak to like the previous presentation or previous meeting, you know, versus having two meetings, you know, previous information and the, you know, current evening. So that way we can address anything that was from the previous one. I think that would be a great idea.
So what I could do is I could do that and I could probably sandwich something other than Bartel into that meeting and then we'll put Bartel in the second meeting. And that, I also think it might be a good chance for the committee to start, you know, exercising its voice a little bit because I, I think it's hard to sit there and just listen to a lot of presentation without being able to ask questions and engage with the material.
I agree with that.
Having a period, a defined period for the committee as a whole to ask questions, whether it's about the, the past meetings of just giving them a chance to ask questions, come back after they've thought about it, done a little bit of more research or explored the ideas more. So if we just make that part of the process so that questions, people know there isn't just one opportunity to ask those questions.
Yeah, I think that makes a ton of sense. So let's do that. And I think it makes sense, as you say, to build it into the process as well. But I would say a half hour, does that sound fair?
Yeah, that sounds very reasonable.
Yeah, I think that would be fine.
Grant, you could start in one.
Okay, you're okay with that too, okay. All right, so we'll start with a half hour of questions. I think it makes a lot of sense. It just was unfortunate we didn't have enough time to get questions there. And these are foundational issues, so I think it's a good opportunity to talk about, about them. So, and I think it's really, I mean, to be clear, it's really questions about John's presentation, Michelle's presentation and any questions for Matt as well.
I will, if I may, John, I would just ask that if there are specific questions or specific areas of interest and or concern, as Mr. Milano put it, that we at least know what those areas are because, like everyone has said, there was quite a bit of information and none of us are actuaries, of course. And to sit there and try to do financial calculations that somebody may have spent, you know, a bit of time going and trying to backtrack into is going to be extremely difficult, if not impossible. So if Mr. Milano has any specific concerns, whether he talked directly with you offline or here at this committee meeting, that would be very helpful for us to help.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Milano, if you wouldn't mind either calling me to talk about what those questions are or write them. I'm not saying you have to stick to a perfect script or anything, but just give them a chance to prepare. I think you'll get better quality criticism implied. So.
I think we can make that part of the process for all of the committee members. We are brown acted. We want to make sure that we follow those rules. But if the committee members have a defined process where they can prepare questions or have you and the staff better prepared with answers, it would make the meetings more efficient.
So my suggestion is that you root those to me. Remember, you cannot reply all or copy all. So it would come to me, let me deal with them. And that, I think, is going to be a cleaner process than peppering different staff members with different things too. I'd like to keep, be able to coordinate the process.
Yeah, no problem for me.
No, no reply all though. So that's, that's critical. Okay, I think we've come up with some really good stuff here. I really appreciate everybody's efforts here. And I think we're at a good stopping place and we'll see you all in a week.
Can I just ask, were there any callers on any of the items before we conclude?
We do not have any callers at this time.
All of our callers went to sleep.
For the adjournment, may I have motion and second, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
And we're at 8:00 PM.
All right, thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.